I'm gonna go to the family.
They all stressed.
Just about everybody.
They'll be. You started it up.
Oh, you did. You been okay?
My father told you so.
Everything's okay.
You know, Teddy after that? Everybody look at him. Look, I call it all these. He had nerves, but for me, it's not. Back in the building. Cop here too, that's me.
Wonderful song she plays today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ran a little bit, it's 25 years.
It's still a long way to go.
Actually, no. What's that? A cop in his name?
Sasha.
Sasha?
Yeah, Sasha.
Sasha. The phone. Yeah, that's Sasha. He's a one-man band too, they don't have a helper for him, really. Everything you see, everything you do is all like that much. Does a great job, that's it. Still such a nice guy. Yeah, yes. I like to watch somebody gets excited because he's got this.
Oh, yeah, I know.
So he loves me, that you can tell. Yeah. That's fun, Teddy, this is fresh.
Okay.
Hi.
Is Lynn here?
Lynn. Better than I deserve.
Next month.
Good man.
Yes.
It's Howard's birthday at the end.
All that time, all day. And I come back.
Yeah. It's your birthday. Howard's birthday.
You're fine. I would have a problem.
So.
Fix the time.
Yeah, first, so. Alright, let's get it started.
Is it all working?
Yes.
Any story?
Yeah.
So. Those two members, you know that. Any things they have?
If there's, um, first of all, we have a new member, Megan Allen, representing LPA.
May? You can sing a song.
Megan. Megan, Megan. Megan. And we have another new member, but no, she calls it on such short notice.
And this month, we also have Did Five, the president of the Paraprofessionals, so we're actually finally gonna give a Paraprofessional.
Wonderful, so we'll be.
She had a church obligation tonight, Angela Lee from Carco Heights.
Great, so we'll have everybody.
Yes.
That's wonderful, thanks. Alright, if you'd sign the roll sheet, we'll get started. First thing is approval of the agenda. If there's no objection, can we move the election of officers to the front? It's at the end, okay? There's motion. There's second. All those in favor of approving the agenda, if I'm moving the election of officers first?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Thank you, sir. Alright. Approval of minutes? Anybody have any questions, changes, suggestions in the minutes?
Will we accept?
Okay.
I'll check, man.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
To approve the, um, Friday. And we'll go to the election of officers for 2019.
Nominate. Thank you, ma'am.
Is there another nomination? Look at this flower. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominate or not, start. Okay. We have a co-chair to nominate. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Karen. Right back to the agenda. Uh, before we do that, is there anyone who has a problem with meeting on Wednesday night? You do. Okay, and you do too. And Megan does too. And you do too. So we've got four who can't, and the reason I'm asking is, is Brett Lachle, um, will be on the new board insurance committee, and he is in class Tuesdays and Thursday nights. But if we make, wait to meet again till June 1, like we did last year, if we use this for our January, February, March quarter meeting, and then April, May, June, if we don't meet till June, he shouldn't have a conflict. So we'll wait, I don't know how many semesters he's taking or what. But hopefully, he won't have that problem in, in June. Whose place, whose place is he taking on the board insurance?
Jeremy Haddal.
Oh, Jeremy, okay.
Yeah.
I just know he texted me and said that, um, he couldn't be here tonight because he had a class, and to see if we could meet on Wednesdays.
How would Mondays be? That's the only day we have to talk about. How would a Monday be? I'd be good on Monday.
Anybody else have a problem on Monday?
I have a problem.
Counting a lot of stuff. And taking care of the children. Tuesdays and Fridays are my good days.
Okay. Well, we'll see what his.
Let's, yeah, let's find out what his schedule is, and then we can, we can do that.
Okay, Mr. Fontaine, you're up.
Well, good evening, everybody. Had to be with you. Um, we will be going over, uh, um, all of your planned data for, uh, 2018. As of 12:31, so full year comparison here. Uh, and, um, when we met last, uh, we were at about 1.9% above, uh, the 2017 cost. And I told you, um, during our, um, summer months, we were starting to experience some higher cost claims, and that, uh, that did come to fruition. Um, I'll take you through all of the reports, I'll tell you what's going on with the plan, and what we're looking at, uh, in, uh, in future months here. Um, just starting off on page one here, you see we're starting with the participation at the top. Um, slight increase in participation this year, about 2%. Some of the things I'll share with you in further slides. Um, in, in the participation and in your demographics, we've discussed a number of times, that as a school board, one of the things I always have been watching and monitoring very closely is as, uh, the all patch went down, uh, during the last couple of years, that did not affect our, our planned membership. Remember, participation is the number of actives and retirees that you have in your group. Membership is the number of bodies, belly buttons, whatever you want to call that, but, um, uh, so you don't want your membership to be outpacing your participation, gaining more bodies than you, you have, uh, on your entire, uh, entire population of employees and retirees. Secondly, you don't want your dependent population, uh, out, uh, costing your, uh, your active, uh, and retiree population there. So we looked at those things on several of our school systems. Uh, we see that spouses can actually, uh, are expending more on a per-member basis than the employee is. Uh, and some of the cases, up to 35, 40%. Your case is not running that way, your membership is not outpacing your, uh, participation. Uh, on a three-year average, spouses are actually costing slightly less than employees, so all of your demographics are performing well on it. I will tell you, demographically, um, your retiree population, the growth of the retiree population is outpacing the growth of the active population. So that does make for a higher risk because, uh, the retirees are, are staying with us. Couple of other things I want to point out to you. Uh, we go through our medical and prescription, uh, uh, claims here, and we were at $50,226, as compared to the 44 million the previous year. Now, taken in mind that 2017 was a very, very good year, okay? We decreased costs, uh, in, uh, 2017, because you can see at 16, we're at 46 million with 5,500 employees. Uh, 17, 44 million with 5,578. And then, of course, our 50 million with the 56, 91. I'm gonna have all of this broken down for you on a per-employee-per-month basis on the next page. One of the things that held down the cost, because we, you know, that $6 million, uh, increase in claims does not mean we had a $6 million increase in cost. Remember that we have reinsurance to protect us. So what happened since we met last, we had a, a mirage of high-cost claimants predominantly circulatory and cancer. Uh, and when I say high cost, I'm talking a quarter of a million dollars or more. Uh, that hit us at the end of the year. Several of them were over a half a million dollars. So our reinsurance protected us in a big way. You can see that our plan reimbursements went from a million seven to 3,563,000. Where does that come from? Increased reimbursements on these high-cost claimants. And, uh, increased, uh, rebates on our prescription drugs. Remember when we first started working with you group? We, uh, we improved those prescription drug contracts tremendously. We were getting rebates on a quarterly basis to the tune of about 400,000, where rebate this month in January was $875,000. Okay? Uh, that comes to us quarterly, so that's, uh, a big improvement there. So those plan reimbursements do help to hold down the cost of the plan. Uh, our drug subsidies, uh, went up a little bit. Uh, total fixed cost, right about the same. Our retiree, uh, uh, premiums that we pay to Humana, uh, just a little bit with the increase there. Now remember, Humana's cost is actually going down for 2019. Okay? We got a rate reduction from Humana for the 1119 renewal, so that will have an effect on lowering the cost of the plan for this year. All that being said, when we take into the client, into account the claims, less the reimbursements to the plan, plus the Humana premium and fixed cost, total plan cost of 49,906,331. Then we have our funding from both the actives, retirees, and board contributions there. And you can see that your active contributions actually went down. We did not have a rate increase. Why would the active contributions go down? More singles, less families? More people moving to the high deductible plan? Okay? That type of thing. So this is, uh, uh, it did have a little bit of an adverse effect on the funding, but of course, the more people that move to the high deductible health plan, you know, getting a little less contribution versus a lot more savings. Uh, anybody that moves to that plan is certainly, uh, gonna help the expenses here. Um, and, but our retiree, because of the retiree growth, the contributions from retirees have actually gone up. So no premium changes, but it's just, I just wanted to point that out to you there. So with the 50,362,719 in funding, against the 49,906,331 of planned cost, we are, are, we, we just about spent the, uh, the piggy bank here, uh, in that, um, you've got a surplus of 456,388. I'll tell you, in January, we just about doubled that. Because January was a good month, okay? While we kept having good months, 2017 was a fantastic year, until the latter part, uh, of the year, when we had these high-cost claimants. When, uh, and talking, uh, with Mona and really, uh, looking at the renewal and, and, uh, and whatnot, could closely monitor the plan in this, in these next several months, because if we were to have a continued cost like this, we've got some work to do. We've gotta look at how we're gonna slow this, this train down. Um, of the 17 high-cost claimants that I reviewed, the vast, vast majority of them are not ongoing. Um, a few have passed away rest there, so, uh, a few we were able to work with the, uh, prescription drugs, and, uh, for example, in some of these high-cost cancer medications, we were able to, uh, get the cost down considerably on those. So between recontracting on the pharmacy and, uh, the picture of the ongoing claims, of the, uh, 17 high-cost claimants, it was 5.6 million. So it's 17 people spent into this 40, 50 million dollar, uh, uh, plan that you have here. Only about 2 million of that is ongoing. Okay? So I do suspect that we will go back to some lower cost. Uh, I'd be telling you the opposite of the 17. Uh, the majority of them were still under their, uh, treatment, or we had some long-term end-stage renal disease claimants or anything like that. But when it's heart and cancer, some, we, we've completed the continuum of, of many of those, and then a few of them, uh, are no longer with us. So the, the, the outlook going forward, we're gonna monitor real closely. I do believe that the, uh, experience we had in the second half of 18 is not a trend, but a spike. Okay? It's, uh, it doesn't meet the history of your plan. Uh, so I'm, I'm expecting costs to, uh, to go down to have in January. I'll closely monitor. If in fact, costs were to continue to be high, before we talk about rate increases, before we talk about benefit changes, we talk about getting, uh, um, look at our network, possibly go to some of our, our, our large providers and negotiate some, uh, um, uh, higher fee discounts, uh, things we can do on the prescription drug side, um, things like that. Uh, and, and look into where we can make changes into the plan that we always are looking at, but where can we make changes in the plan that are gonna cut costs that doesn't, uh, uh, impact the plan member?
So Lynn, you're saying that you don't think we need to make a change now? Because I know we had some concern.
If we were to be making any changes, they would be made, uh, in June.
In June.
There would be their case.
So we would not, you don't anticipate us being further in the hole? And the reason I'm asking that is because we, we wanted to avoid a major rate increase like we had to face once before. So you're saying if we wait until June, we're still gonna be okay? You can still look at the providers and?
I would be telling you the exact opposite of these large claimants that I've reviewed. We review everything, the case notes, uh, uh, on, on up, and even go, uh, deeper than that. You gotta get a clear picture of, of what's going on with these members, and when you're doing the renewal, especially with regard to, uh, the reinsurance, you really get into the details of not only what that claimant has cost you in the past, but what's the projection of cost in the future. And if I thought the majority of these were ongoing and high dollars and that, we just, you know, if you're, if you're funding at 4.1, okay? Any month that we expend more than 4.1, we, we, we're digging the hole deeper. Okay? So, uh, if you, if you turn to page three.
The 17 people, are any of those people on Medicare? Of the 17 with the high?
A couple were.
Just a couple.
And, uh, the reason you see those dollars so high is if the cancer meds are, some of these high-cost meds, uh, um, that's where the, the, the cost comes from. Because when you're Medicare primary, obviously, the medical side of it is gonna be paid for by Medicare, but the plan's on the hook, the prescription drugs.
Yes.
Okay? So it really tells the story of, uh, of what I just said, or explained to you. When you, when you look at the, look at the total plan cost on page three, in about, in the middle, you'll see that in some months, I mean, plan cost is as little as 2.9 million. Look at February. Look at July, September, November, December. Okay? Any of those months where you see red down there at the bottom, we lost money. For the entire year, we were at 456. The year before, we were $3.8 million ahead. Okay? So, for example, January of this year, we are at $687.81 PEPM. We're funding at 738. So you can see we made several hundred thousand dollars in January. It fluctuates like that. We'll keep a close monitor on it. We will know, uh, by, um, mid-March, really, where we're going to be going from a, uh, a change perspective. And my changes that, um, are gonna be on the top of the recommendation list are going to be those that don't impact a member. Okay, that's the first one, so you do those first, so, uh, affecting somebody's paycheck comes last. Okay? Enrollment wise, what we're talking about, and because I touched on this a lot in the first page, we're not gonna spend a lot of time on it, but you can see that your singles went up from the 2,994 to 3,068. That's a 2.5% increase where the employee and family only went up 1.6. Spousal membership only went up 1.4. So we have an adverse selection on our plan? No, we're not. On page five, membership, you can face with the same as our, um, uh, employee-retiree growth, so not being selected upon there. On page six, when we look at these average paid per member per month numbers, employee, 2127, spouse, 502. Opposite on some of the cases we look at, especially municipalities, especially in an area where the rest of the industries were on the downturn. Because when you lose 42, 45% of your employees in the all patch, they gotta get covered somewhere. A lot of them, uh, um, could have been married to people that work over here. Okay? A lot of luck going on in that one, I gotta tell you. And some of the other cases, uh, uh, around here took on a lot of membership. Um, medical claims, I'll point you to, uh, uh, the bottom bullet in this page. And this basically tells the whole story. From a medical standpoint, you took, you went up 17%, that's on gross. Now remember, we didn't do that because, go up 17% cost-wise, we only went up 7%. And that's because, once you hit reinsurance, you're not expending your money anymore, and we also got more money back in the prescription drug rebates. But if you look at the bottom bullet, you had 96 people, or 1% of your total membership, okay? That had claims in excess of $50,000, and it totaled almost $12 million. Okay? So 1% of your membership drove 37% of your medical claims. Okay? You compare that to the previous year, you had 79 versus 96, and instead of 11,999, you were at 8,222, okay? If you calculate that on a per-employee-per-member basis, that's a 42% increase in high-cost claimants. Folks, that's not a trend, that's a spike. Okay? So we're gonna watch that, it's a $3.7 million difference in that one short period.
So Lynn, you mentioned that two of those people were on Medicare. And those two people on Medicare had us as their secondary revenue.
Correct.
They would have had to be.
If you had Humana, none of those figures would not be in here.
They would have no effect on our plan other than the Humana premium?
No. We would have paid one small premium for them, and the risk of all of that. We are going to be adopting some more education, uh, with regard to, um, uh, the Humana plan, uh, because the folks that have decided to participate in it have been, uh, very, very, very pleased with it, uh, not only in your system, but in other systems. So we want, wanna put some education out there, so at least your membership is aware of what that choice is. Um, uh, it's, uh, $90 a month less than, less than premium. Um, you still have a good choice of providers. Uh, you still have, uh, it's actually the same, a better coverage from a deductible, co-pay standpoint, that type of thing. Uh, and also provide some education to plan members, uh, on the differences between your enhanced, basic, and high deductible health plan. Okay? Uh, those folks that have gotten into the high deductible health plan, um, I don't think you could make them come out of it, uh, it, uh, maybe the other ones free. Because, uh, from a standpoint of how, uh, the money works in those plans, you really can't miss, even if you have some claims. Uh, we're on page 18.
But you're not talking about forcing anybody onto Humana? Because we still have retirees who didn't have the option to go to Medicare.
I think that's all in high.
The only people that would have the option to go on Humana, you have to have Medicare. So those folks that, that retired prior to '84 that never paid a dime into Medicare cannot, cannot, or use, uh, Humana.
I, I think it's all in, in how you present that, like, uh, because I think the last time we talked about it, it was more like it was being switched from one to the other. And I think that's why you had such a turmoil at meetings about it. I think it's all, it's, it's educational, or, okay?
It's fully educational. It's not, it's not going to be from a sales pitch standpoint.
Yeah.
You, you, your membership, if you've got choice, you wanna arm them with the facts.
Yeah.
Okay? And that's what it's gonna be all about, because in, in many cases, the facts, uh, uh, state that, um, you know, the, the Humana plan is a very good value proposition for your employees. Some people are gonna prefer, uh, uh, the, the, the value proposition in your Blue Cross plan, but for many, they, they're gonna like the, uh, uh, what they learned from Humana, and like what they learned, uh, from the high deductible plan versus the basic plan or enhanced, which is facts. That's why they have choice, because one plan's gonna work better for this person, another plan's gonna work better for that person. Different medical history, different utilization, different providers, that type of thing.
Have you heard anything about, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, doing a Humana-type situation?
We've looked at.
Okay, well, that, there's, but that's advantage, it's not, it's not, it's not a PPO. It's more of a, it's an HMO situation right now for individuals. But they, they were supposed to come out with a PPO plan, like for retirees.
Yeah.
And they have, they've gotten it?
On a group basis, yes.
Okay, and, but we know nothing about, as far as?
When is competitive this year?
It was not. Okay. I was just wondering, because it was supposed to, it was supposed to have come out.
Could be a different story this year, you know? Blue Cross has really invested a lot of time and money in that product.
Right.
And, um, I think that they'll be more competitive this year.
Okay, so as far as right now, they're not as competitive with Humana, so basically, we should nix that.
We went out to market and shop the marketplace.
We're doing, okay, alright, okay.
Um, and they're close right now, too. You know, uh, uh, Humana and United have the majority of that market on, uh, um.
Retirees.
Um, there's several carriers, uh, and they've all come down, because what happened is your expenses from the Affordable Care Act matured, and they no longer had to pay, uh, those expenses, and that brought the premiums down. So all of our, um, Medicare Advantage renewals, uh, were rate increases this year. And that was a huge change, because it was the area of the plan that had the biggest rate increases in the past. Some of them, uh, were hot. Um, prescription claims on, uh, uh, on your per-employee-per-month basis, up at 4.3%. If we were not talking about these high-cost specialty meds, you would see about a 6% decrease. A 6% decrease in, in pharmacy on a, a plan of your size covering the number of retirees that you cover is unheard of. But it comes from the contractual differences that were negotiated over the last couple of years. Also, uh, some of the, um, uh, changes that we made last year with regard to formulary, with regard to your management rules. Also, some of the changes that we made last year with regard to formulary, with regard to your management rules around prior authorization and quantity limits and those things. And if you remember, we had savings of here, but impacted your membership of here, and we haven't heard a peep from those changes.
We did have a change, because they were charging the wrong amounts, as far as for prescription drugs, and they're different tiers.
R X benefits?
Yeah, expenses.
And they fixed that, and they gave it to us.
And they did correct them. Okay, are we trying anything as far as for going towards like a cash, when you go to the pharmacy and trying to get the pharmacy to give you like a cash price? Would be cheaper, actually, than an actual thirty-dollar co-pay? Have we tried that? We talked about it before.
If you're, if...
I tried that.
Did it work?
You don't pay up to your co-pay if the drug costs less than your co-pay.
They're not gonna charge you more than the cost of the drug.
Well, I'm getting it. My co-pay would be thirty, I pay ten for ninety days' grace.
He's talking about like, when Target or Walmart offers us four dollars and ten dollars?
That's not a law medication, that's...
Yeah, you can opt to do that, that doesn't run through the plan.
Right, it does, yeah, so I'm not costing the plan anything. I mean, it's cheaper for me, and I'm not, but maybe we need to have more of our members ask for that.
Okay.
And if they know about our education.
No, we need to know what medicine is under that, because not one of my medicines, I'm with...
Not any of them?
None. See, that's what I say, you're lucky.
I am.
No, I'm not that lucky.
I am. When you talk about good R X, that gives you a pretty good idea of what the medicines cost between, you know, the big companies, Walmart, CVS, et cetera, et cetera. And there is, there are differences, you know? And all I can tell you is that, I mean, when I found that out, I started asking for a cash price and what wasn't. And in my particular case, for what I need on a ninety-day script, okay, and it's an old formula, okay, it's an old medicine. My, going through the insurance, it would cost me thirty dollars every three months. I pay ten dollars for every three months. So, but, I mean, I asked. If I had to ask, I would be paying thirty dollars.
Same thing with the transparency tool on the medical side, you know? As much money as you can save, that's the areas that we need to address in the education. Because if somebody does it once or twice, they likely to continue to do it. But if it's out of sight and out of mind, they never do it. They just go to the store, pay their co-pay, and off they go. Okay? And they never get the savings, and the plan never gets the savings.
Right.
There's gonna be a lot of campaign around that and education. But where I'm going with your prescription drug program is, because of the contractual changes we made in the negotiations, and of course, we got another two-point-three million dollars of savings for the 2019 pricing and all of this type of thing, without making any kind of authorization of quantitative or changes of management rules or anything like that. If we took the specialty meds out, your cost actually in eighteen went down five-point-nine percent.
I agree.
Your cost increase is purely from high-cost medications. Which ones? The category of anti-inflammatories that treat rheumatoid arthritis, Crohn's, and moderates to severe plaque psoriasis, your Embroles, your Humeras, all of that, on TV every night.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
You've got controls in your plan that are pretty strong. We're always looking to make sure, we're looking in areas to beef those up, because you want people to have them available to them, but only when medically necessary, and the right one. Okay? Because they're all ranging costs from six, seven thousand dollars a month to fifteen thousand dollars a month. Okay? And you don't want to take them until it's medically necessary, all of that type of thing. So some of the ones we have with the high-cost cancers that are not ongoing, I think we'll probably see a downturn in our costs, because when you take somebody who's on a regimen of a chemo med that costs seventy thousand dollars a month, and they're no longer covered under the plan, that makes stats different, things like that. So we've, this is the area that probably requires more work than anything to control the costs, because it's the highest rising cost in our plan. While we're on that, I'm gonna kind of skip you over, because we'll talk about that at the same time. Go to page twenty. And this is just gonna bring this topic home. These ten medications, bottom right-hand corner, those ten medications are less than two percent of your scripts to drive almost a quarter of your entire prescription drug cost. And you can see they increased, your high-cost meds increased about fourteen percent. Overall, our increase was only four percent. We're not gonna have that pommel-less reoccurring, at least not for the current, the near periods. And then some of these cancer medications will be lowered as well. So I think our prescriptions will actually come down for a period.
If you look at the Humira pin, number one in 2013, two-hundred-fifty-four thousand dollars. Number one in 2018, nine-hundred-fifty-nine thousand.
That's crazy.
It's not good, it's crazy.
Yep. And that's probably for the convenience of it.
You haven't had that many more people using that drug.
Well, every time you have a new script, there's anywhere from seventy to hundred thousand dollars of additional claims.
And it's from...
Page nine, total plan claims per employee per month, net of the reimbursements, eight-point-one. Good bit of discussion around page ten or something. You know, we talked a lot, lot, lot about benefits when I was first introduced to you guys, and we made some good choices, and we really had a good year in seventeen, and even with the high-cost claims in eighteen, able to control, you know, the cost of the plan, and we're not in any deficit position or anything like that. But, you know, if you look at what's going on in the migration here, we've had enhanced plan increased by two-point-seven percent last year. Why? And then rate increase, things didn't change, so as people say, you know, I'm gonna upgrade my benefit a little bit here. Basic plan, down one-point-one. Blue Saber, up fifteen-point-two. Where's the good news in that? Super good news on the Blue Saber side, okay? Not much to talk of on basic, but in this day and age, I don't like to see any percentage moving to the enhanced. But, you know, if I were participating in your plan, and I'm on that PPO side, thought process, and I didn't have any claims last year, but I gotta have a procedure this year, bumping up to the enhanced, that could be something. With the more and more people look at that Blue Saber plan, I think, you know, fifteen percent, if we can keep those double-digit numbers going into that plan, that's gonna have a good effect on slowing down the cost of the plan. Look at the three bullets at the bottom. The enhanced plan represents fourteen-point-eight percent of your participation, with twenty percent of your claims. So it's not supporting itself. Basic plan is sixty-seven percent of your participation, and represents seventy-two percent of your claims. It's not supporting itself. Blue Saber plan is eighteen percent of your population, and seven-point-four percent. It's not only supporting itself, it's subsidizing the other two. Okay? Great difference in costs. Total plan cost per employee, we talked on that, and then I keep removing to that two-point-nine percent over the last five years, even with the increase in eighteen. When we talk about high-cost claimants being the driver of it, this makes it very easy to see, when you have a thirty-seven-point-nine percent increase in inpatient hospitalization, that's a product of high-cost claims. In that short period of time. Albeit, if you look across here, in hospital, inpatient, the increase, that percentage increases is higher, because seventeen was such a low year. If you look across here, thirteen at one-thirty-six, one-forty-three, one-forty-seven, one-fifty-six, I think it is, I gotta enter here, down to one-oh-three, back to one-forty-two. Seventeen was a good, good year.
Lynn, on page eleven, the two-point-nine percent annual, your average annual increase is 2013. That's extremely reasonable, isn't it?
Well, if you talk about healthcare trends during that period, it's more than double that, you know, seven percent. That's healthcare trend national. Most groups don't cover retirees. When you hit in two-point-nine, you're doing well. If we did not have the increased cost at the end of this year, we'd probably be under two. And so that's what, my goal is to get you back under two. Top diagnosis on the inpatient, circulatory, musculoskeletal, and neoplasm. If you add these top categories up, in seventeen versus eighteen, all of these P E P M numbers, we're talking about a forty-five percent increase on top diagnosis. Circulatory went up sixty-eight, sixty-nine percent. Musculoskeletal at forty-two, neoplasms at thirty-five. On outpatient basis, mostly neoplasm. Circulatory up as well. On page fifteen, the only real glaring difference here, lower insured didn't get a number of those high-cost claimants at the end of the year, because they went from two-point-eight to four-point-seven. After that, five-point-six, basically, to five-point-nine. Not much for change there. Still have fantastic generic utilization, especially for a case your size and your demographics, to be hitting at eighty-six, eighty-seven percent. Now, key in on the brand percentage at fourteen, okay? Fourteen percent of your meds are driving eighty-three percent of your company. That's the difference between your brand generic from a cost angle, especially when you factor in the high-cost meds. On a good note, a little less medication per capita, okay? But it still blows your mind to know that, on average, okay, your employees are taking three scripts per employee per month. Now, you know the vast majority of the people, probably eighty-five percent of the people, aren't on any script at all. So that tells you, of the folks that are, you've got some folks taking multiple medications.
That probably goes up when school starts.
It goes down in the summer, that's it.
It goes down in the summer.
Get out the A D H D medication. The top ten by number of prescriptions, you know, I don't see the A D H Ds and stuff like that, but they're all of the things that you would want them to be. Controlling high blood pressure, controlling cholesterol, controlling diabetes, all of that type of thing. Antibiotics and so forth. We looked at page twenty already, you know, where that cost is coming from. Then we look at the PPO savings, this is the percentage discount from your network. Sixty-nine percent, a tough number to beat. You know, when we started talking about those percentages from some of the other networks and all of that type of thing, you know, in the past, we're talking, they were giving you guarantees of a percentage far less. Okay? And then the guarantees are based on three-point-one. And on top of that, almost the entirety of your claims, ninety-eight-point-four percent, are in net. Then, on page twenty-three, in any plan, you've got basically two components. You've got your hard cost of doing business, and then you've got your claims. And you would want the majority of your cost, obviously, to be claims, because the other portion's fixed. Running your plan for six, at six percent, is a very, very competitive percentage on fixed cost in your plan. So administration at the five-point-two percent, and reinsurance costing one-point-two, especially when we got the reinsurance reimbursements we got last year, and we didn't have a bigger increase on our reinsurance renewal. Lastly, I don't think there's a page in this report that brings home the impact of the high-cost claimants more than this one does, because it's easy to see that the variance from seventeen to eighteen is on claimants over fifty thousand. Fifty thousand to two-hundred thousand, a million seven. Two-hundred thousand and above, one-point-nine, or almost two million dollars of variance there. And once again, I'll point you to that first bullet, ninety-six members over fifty thousand versus seventy-nine. Eleven, almost twelve million dollars versus eight million dollars. Three million seven is your difference there. And most importantly, the vast majority of them not ongoing. So if we continue the weeks that we had, the kind of month in January, and don't think that January is always a good month, because you start your deductibles all over and all of that kind of thing, because January's not January claims. Okay? The claims paid in January occurred in November, December, okay? So you usually see your experience for 2019 start to come into the plan in February, when people will be meeting deductibles and all of that type of thing. So as we monitor these next couple of months, if our cost comes back down and looking like seventeen, we don't have as much work to do. If the cost continues like the last quarter of eighteen, okay, they're rolling up our sleeves, folks. We've got some work to do. Either way, we've got work to do. But that work will probably not come into the area of premium benefits unless we have continuation of those high-cost claims.
Any questions, Mr. President?
I do have a question, let me just, your report is excellent. Your report is excellent, and always is. This is exactly what we are asking for. Because I've been dealing a lot with this with my mother with Medicare, does the Blue Cross, our Blue Cross plan cover home health and Medicare for not, not Medicare, hospice for non-Medicare employees?
Yes, but when you say, here's what a lot of people don't realize, there's a difference between a medical claim or services or daily living, okay? No medical plan covers the cost to feed somebody, clothe somebody.
No, I'm talking about like nursing services.
If somebody's terminal and put in hospice, yes, that's covered.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Lynn, before you leave, do you want to set the, I know setting the next meeting's at the end of the agenda, but if you're gonna leave, because we still have more to do, you want to set the meeting next meeting in June?
In June. Do we want to set the date?
Yes.
Now, do y'all want to wait to figure out whether y'all are gonna have them on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, or whatever first? Because y'all can tell me when to have them. Because y'all can tell me when to have them, I can tell you.
And you'll be here?
If we're not booked in June, y'all tell me when you walk me here, and I'll be here.
Okay. But the month would be June. And that's, you said, you also said you would know what direction we were heading in by mid-March. Is there any way you could let us know?
Yeah, the first, the budget meeting's going to start up. Our group insurance fund budget is going to be presented in March twenty-sixth. So, if you want to meet before then, you can. I'd certainly encourage you to come to that meeting for sure, what we're going to present. So, we'll be working on that between now and then.
But you would not, in that, in that budget submission, you're not dealing with anything for Lynn?
Yeah.
Or you are?
Sure.
So, you are.
That would be where we would request a budget increase, I mean, the premium increase if there were one, or benefit adjustments if there are any.
But you said we wouldn't be looking at that until June.
That would be the effective date of it if it did.
That's the report, and yeah, so we probably.
It would not be a bad idea for us to get together mid-March.
So, okay, that's what I needed to know. So, we need to meet before the March twenty-sixth meeting?
If you want to go over, if we have recommendations to send.
When will you have your budget proposals done?
It'll have to be done prior to March twenty-sixth.
Yeah, but I don't want, I don't want to say March fifteenth, and you're not, I don't want to.
Oh, it would have to be.
Okay, I don't have a calendar. Can somebody make a calendar for March, at least a week before March twenty-sixth?
The twelfth is a Tuesday.
Twelfth is a Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have a problem with March the twelfth besides Brett? Okay, let's make it for Tuesday, March twelfth, for our next meeting. Is that okay with you, Lynn? Do you have your calendar? And Megan, it's not the norm. I told you, we need one quarter or so.
Come on, twenty-fifth, we need a month.
March twelfth.
March the twelfth.
Five-thirty?
Yes. Five-thirty, March twelfth. If Lynn can be here.
Absolutely.
Lynn, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. And Mona, you'll send out a reminder again?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks a bunch.
So, then when I look at page twenty-four, so we have five thousand twenty-eight people who claimed last year that didn't claim, they claimed between zero and five hundred dollars. And those, the majority of those people are probably on the basic or enhanced plan. Those people should really be on the high deductible plan.
Absolutely.
So, you have the five thousand people out there that really should be on the high deductible.
So, you're talking about five thousand twenty-eight out of...
Because they're paying two-hundred-something dollars a month where they should be paying ten dollars a month and putting it in their HSA. I mean, it just makes total financial sense for these people to be educated on that opportunity. We have five thousand people that never, didn't meet their deductible, deductible's nine fifty for basic, and then enhanced is what?
Oh.
So, we know at least that.
But you're including them in your education plan about Humana Enhanced and, and...
Yes.
Are you, okay.
He's just, I think, driving home the point of how many people would have benefited from it.
Yeah.
Because obviously, you're paid a thousand dollars plus less premium, and you didn't have the claim, and that money would be sitting in your HSA account.
And that can stay in that account?
Rolls over. I, I did it years ago, and I'm not making this into a sales pitch, I'll just share my own personal experience with you. I moved into a plan like that, and the reason I did is because the kids were all older and out of their, you know, monthly illness or whatever, or what it might be, and, and that type of thing. And so, we had several years where, other than, you know, checkups faded a hundred percent, other than a minor illness happening on them, we didn't have anything. And my son had to have surgery in, during the holidays, and it didn't cost me a dime because his mother's sitting there in my HSA account. Pretty, pretty nice, especially right after Christmas because they hurt problems.
Are you doing the education program or the insurance program?
We're going to prepare a PowerPoint for that type of thing and work together on that.
I actually had somebody thanking today from transportation who suggested going on the plan, and she thanked me the day I also had a phone call a couple of months ago from a counselor, from a friend, a counselor in Carano, who said he has now eight thousand dollars in his HSA.
Well, I think it's like Lynn said earlier, some things are good for some folks, not good for other folks, and I think the fact that...
Just for them to be employed.
The fact that we can offer the options to, to the employees is good, but I do believe that, that the education plan is good if we can get a PowerPoint that can get into all the schools and faculty meeting or some point in time, so we're touching everybody, you know, and not just a certain group of employees.
And Mona brought a, a good point up earlier too. I mean, your flex plan participations, there's nowhere near which, even if you're on a P P O plan, God knows you've got some folks with some unreimbursed medical expenses that could take advantage of paying for them with pre-tax dollars.
Pre-tax dollars, yeah.
So, that, that, that basically is an education standpoint from our standpoint, from the LPSS, we need to get that out to the people, especially the new teachers and whatnot, you know?
Possibly, the venue that you've invited me to before could be a good one for some education.
Okay.
You know? If, if you let me know when those are taking place, I can, I can get some education out.
What venue is that? The retired teachers association?
The retired teachers.
I think we're talking about Humana.
Yeah. Well, we, because we had discussed already, you know, having maybe the representative there from, you know, both, both sides, Blue Cross as well as Humana. And the guy from, from Humana has been trying to get, get in and whatnot. Things are done so far in advance, it's just we haven't scheduled it yet. But we, you know what, maybe having you come in as, as our consultant may sort of allow us to transition in and, and kind of soften the blow, so to speak.
You know what? I can speak for retirees when I go to those meetings. What I hear about Humana, first thing, my doctors are not a part of it. Second thing, the friends who do have it, they're having trouble with payments. Not them, but the insurance paying their doctors. So, then the doctors don't want Humana anymore, then they have to go find another doctor. So, if you bring that to retirees, that's what you're going to give them, I'm telling you. That's, that's what's going to come.
And in some cases, what's happening at doctors.
That's why they need their education so badly because
Yeah.
Many of the folks that, that make those kind of statements are speaking from an individual Humana standpoint, okay? And that's not the plan that you're offering, okay? Some of those plans have much narrower networks. Your Humana plan, you can go to any provider that accepts medicine.
You need to bring that to retirees.
Those are the best ways to educate.
Because if you just say it and don't show it to them.
And, and you're right about that because I, in my partyology, in his, in his building and whatnot, because I asked about Humana.
You can walk into the doctor's office and they can say, "We don't accept Humana Gold." Your plan's not Humana Gold.
And that's, that's the point. That's exactly it. There's so many different Humana plans that, that the statement is just, "We don't take Humana." If they don't take Humana Gold, but they take Humana Platinum. But then again, "We don't take Humana." And sometimes the reception is, just, "We don't take Humana."
Yes, they certainly don't take Humana.
Right, that's exactly it.
When do you think you begin the education plan? Are you talking about this school year or the next school year? Pardon me?
We need to begin this year.
Cool.
So, do you have a timeframe when you plan to start?
Not yet.
Could you let us know that as well? Anything else from Mr. Fontaine so he can go eat dinner? Thank you very much.
Page, if you ever want to just review any of this, obviously.
The summer is great. We're looking at the...
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, Mona, review of contracts and services.
Yes, we provided a list of those partners that we contract with to provide benefits and services to me for use and, and their terms. And I report I don't have any issues with any of those folks. I don't want any specific knowledge of something.
The Blue Cross is an automatic renewal?
It is unless we're shopping it out and we don't, didn't offer a change yet. I mean, we just reviewed.
And the E B I contract says it's, it's initial date was one-one, didn't they start before one-one?
They had to do enrollment before one-one, but they're, right, but they're actually in place as of one-one.
So, the enrollment, the contract began prior to enrollment or after enrollment?
Contract started one-one, it was effective one-one.
So, y'all, y'all were doing enrollment prior to, to having a contract?
That's how, that's how it works. The, the company that does these benefits has to start before the effective date of, of the contract. Because the enrollment can't wait till one-one, that's too late.
But why, why don't the contracts start before enrollment?
Because they don't get compensated until one-one.
Got you.
They don't get any compensation.
So, the one-one is the compensation date?
And the, and the coverage date?
And the coverage, that's when the coverage is needed, and that's when the premium, the commissions go to the company that is providing the cost.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next thing we have is R F P for voluntary benefits. That was on the agenda, and all of you should have a copy of it. Does anybody have any questions or changes or suggestions? I have a bunch. My first question was on the insurance side. We're going to have workers comp and then a general liability of a million, E and O coverage. Do we have a separate employee benefits liability?
There is an omissions, would probably be what you're interested in there.
No, I'm interested in employee benefit liability coverage.
Well, they're not, no, that would be us who has to have employee benefit liability coverage.
No.
Shane?
An employer carries that for any negligence on providing benefits to them. But they're not providing benefits. The companies they sell from are providing the benefits.
Right. So, is there any employee benefit coverage at all for this school system?
Oh, yeah, for the school system, yes.
So, you have employee benefit coverage?
That we provide.
With whom?
Comes under our G L, we have a limit.
So, it is in the G L, that's what I wanted to know. But there is no separate employee benefit coverage, it's just in the G L?
Mm-hmm.
And is there any excess liability coverage for anybody?
Okay, so what pager do you need?
I'm asking questions, I'm on my notes.
Okay. My question is, does this address liability? Is that something in here?
I'm, no, I'm asking if there is excess liability coverage.
We have a, no, no, we don't have excess.
Do we need it?
No, because we have five million in our underlying.
Who's going to do the evaluation? Who's going to evaluate our...
We'll have to decide that.
Okay, so we'll do that, and that's it. The scoring didn't make a great deal of sense to me
Okay.
Because the qualifications for the company, which are significant, because it tells us if they can do what they said they're going to do. And the enrollment, which is important to the employees, is important, and voluntary benefits. It didn't make a lot of sense to me that you're going to give three points for qualifications, but if you just list, list, what is it, five references, you get two points? So, my suggestion...
Why don't you just send your suggestions and we'll incorporate it? I don't have any problem with that.
I'm happy to do it.
I mean, I'm glad to do, put it in there. I'm, I'm not married to this thing, it's just a draft.
And I want to compliment you because we started out with this. This is, it was like ten different R F Ps from school systems all over the country, and Mona managed to get it to two pages, and I think we need to add some things to it that are relevant.
I'd be happy to, that's no problem.
But I think it's a huge step forward because we haven't done it before.
We have done it.
For voluntary benefits?
Yes, ma'am. When we, when we chose first, I need to...
Really? How long ago was that?
Two thousand thirteen.
That wasn't the rate of Takeda, that's your bottom.
It was later than that. So, they can hear. Two thousand fifty.
Yeah, we had nothing to do with voluntary benefits, that was hell.
Yeah, that was a nightmare. I just remember it was a nightmare.
In two thousand fifty.
Don't put those two together.
No. But I didn't use that, I put strictly, I called something different together
Okay.
this time.
So, I will, I will send you these. Do we have a, do we need to get the timeframe and decide on the committee?
Well, I'm going to ask, I have a couple of reasons why I don't think it's a good idea to do this this year. We just went through it, I know a lot of us didn't like the process, and I'm happy to put this together, but first of all, a lot of people, a lot of people were affected by the change, and if we go through this again in the fall, we're going to have an employee rebellion, if we have to. I don't, I'm just saying that there are a lot of people and resources that make this happen behind the scenes, and you don't know how disruptive it is.
So, the employee rebellion is in your office?
No, ma'am.
You're talking about...
I'm talking about people happy and getting used to a set of people that are working with them, and then changing again, a whole new set of benefits, a whole new set of customer service numbers. It's very disruptive, and I'd like to give these people a chance to do what they said they could do, because so far, they've, they've exceeded what we expected of them. That's my plea. I, I don't, I'm only one person, but that's how I see it. The people in my office are going to do what they have to do. Yeah, it's a lot of work, it takes hours and hours of reprogramming, we had a lot to do, but people stepped up and did it. But I'm looking at the big picture with the employees out in the schools, and with the satisfaction survey we got back of how happy they were, I hate to upset the applecart this soon. I, I do. Because that would mean we have to put something in place in the summer for the fall.
Right.
You know what, and I understand that reasoning, I really do, and what you're saying. Had the process been R F P to begin with, I would not have a problem with that at all. And you know my objection was the process.
I do.
Not necessarily the company, because I didn't know anything from three-minute presentations alone, but the process, I think had we gone through an R F P and it had been done, I would have absolutely no problems with that.
And that's what my recommendation was to the people who didn't agree with me. Let's do an R F P like now for the fall. But there were people who wanted to pull the trigger because there was such a hue and pride on the employee base. That's what happened. And I'm just, and I totally agree with you, but having said that, and even though I didn't like the process either, I think, I think it's going to be okay until we can do it next year. And I just ask y'all to do that for us.
The concern I have is, is similar to Katie's, but I can tell you, I have already been asked by a board member to have an R F P in place by the end of this year. So, I think what happened was unfortunate, and what bothered me the most was that there was apparently a crisis that was existing, created, and this committee knew nothing about it. That can't ever happen again. It can never happen again. Not for the sake of this committee, but if we're representing employees and there's something going on, and there's, we've got bus drivers here, we've got teachers here, we've got, we'll have a paraprofessional, we had just about every employee group represented here but one, and nobody on this committee knew about it. Nobody. And that's not right. So, I know you say you have a U N C R from the employees, but...
That didn't happen till the fall, however. I understand that, but it came to a head then.
Yeah, but the presentation to the board was that this had been coming for a long time, and there had been problems that we, and, and I was sitting in the audience.
We had that same presentation.
And, yeah, and I had been at the meetings last year, we didn't hear anything about it. And so, there was a lot of discussion about whether this crisis was a real crisis, a recent crisis, a few people and not employee-wide. So, I mean, that, that's my concern, and I really think an R F P should have been done then. We didn't do it, so, I mean, my sense is we ought to do now what we should have done in the fall. I know that can create confusion. It could be the same company wins the R F P, and you still have the same company, and there won't be any changes.
So, what would be your recommended timeline?
For me, what I would like to do is get something we're all comfortable and issue it in the fall for the next year, for two thousand twenty.
What's the typical contract for something like this?
A year.
It's a year at times? So, there's an R F P every year?
No.
No.
Generally not. Not if you're happy with the company, I mean, they, once you settle in with somebody, you try to give them a chance for a few years because they, they invest a little. years, because they, they invest a lot of human resources and money to set everything up and to get everybody money. So to have a return on their investment and give them a chance to take care of us, we should at least...
So you would send out the RFP when?
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
So when would you send out the RFP?
Probably in December or November.
That's if we wait a year. Okay, if we don't wait a year, what would be possible?
It would be now.
It would be now?
Yeah.
Would have to be done...
Well, within, in the spring.
Yeah, right, yeah.
In the spring or in June. How many months would you need? You're going to set it at, what, thirty days?
Yeah.
At least thirty.
And clearly, we know that somebody can be on board very quick, so, because we know that that happens.
At least one company can.
Yeah, and kudos to them for doing that, because that really was a, you know, they sprung to action and did a good job, yes. That's cool.
So if we did it, if we did an RFP, if it went to the board, if we did one now, or our March twenty-sixth, or March twelfth meeting?
Right.
And that went to the board at the board's March meeting for their approval, you could go out, or their April meeting, let's say their April meeting, you could go out in May or June and have somebody onboard for the fall, which could be the same company that would have been hired properly with an RFP.
Yeah. Can we just defer that decision until our March meeting? And that way, we'll see whatever revisions you've made to the RFP.
Y'all send out your revisions, and I'll...
I think that's a great idea. Because let's just defer that until the next meeting.
Is that a...
And I understand the logic, Mona, I really do.
I know, I know y'all are not smitten, hollering at me, I know.
Because there's going to be some changes, which you're offering, et cetera, and then, you know, yeah.
Because you talk about just a very few number, a short number of months, which you're asking, what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
But it's, yeah.
Like between June and December.
Yeah. It seems, and look, I'm not, I'm fairly new to this, but it seems rushed to me to do it in, say, March twelfth at the next meeting, and, and they came through for us. And, you know, to give them, you know, it's just another year.
But how do we know that another company would have come through?
Exactly.
I guess that's my concern, the earnest of it.
I understand.
And the way it was done.
Yeah, I understand that. But we have...
I agree with Katie, who are on the process, you know, certainly not what you would recommend, it's certainly not what we wanted.
And that's not what you've done in the past.
But, you know, I go to all the conferences and I see the competition up there, so I know who's going to bid. And we're going to get some people like we had last time that are totally unqualified and trying to put it together on the fly, like we saw. That is not what we want to catch.
But an RFP would...
There are three players. First Financial, Taylor &amp; Sons, and EB. And I can tell you, First Financial, we've seen, we were not happy with them. Taylor &amp; Sons, and I talked to all the financial people in my position, all the districts, they're, they're having some internal family issues, a family company, they're kind of breaking up, they're having problems with Taylor &amp; Sons. So even though the process was not good, I think the result of what we got was good. I think we probably have the best company out there that is selling this, that have done this before, that's out there right now, other than First Financial. You're right, I didn't know about First Financial, even if I worked here, because I didn't have any problems, nobody complained to me about them. And it wasn't until I got the letter from Tisch and I realized all the problems, I still would have waited a year. My preference would have been, what Mona said, let's, let's give them another year, and let's, let's give them an RFP, and that's, that's not what happened.
And unfortunately...
But it was, I think it's disruptive to employees, I think they came through for us, and I just don't think, I think you need to give them another...
I think in March when we come, if you have a very specific timeline and recommendation, I think that's worth it.
And Mona, if you do a timeline for both, if we do an RFP this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Because what Matt's saying, I mean, you know, and I watch these presentations, and I got to tell you, from watching the presentations in additions to the same three minutes we had, there wasn't anybody in here who was comfortable that we knew everything that we needed to know.
Oh, I see.
And, and you can't tell me that the board was in the same position. So if what you're...
Well, you have a new chairman, a new board representative.
If what you're saying is true, then it may well be that the same company gets the award of the bid, and there is no disruption, but they get the award of the bid through an RFP process and a vote of the board.
Okay.
So, got it. So we can just, so we'll add, I'll send this to you, and we'll add it to the agenda of March twelve, if that's okay with everybody?
March twelve, fine.
Yes, except for Brett, March twelve.
I think there's a question.
I just wanted to clarify that our predecessor, who was awarded the business, I think in fifteen or sixteen, there was no RFP in place when they...
No, we just said there was.
Yes, there was.
There was.
Okay, I don't, I don't, that didn't sound right, but maybe...
We definitely had a presentation.
Yeah, there was definitely, because we sat there. We sat there all day.
How was it?
Yeah.
I know we sat to that.
We sat through that, yeah, that was a long time.
It was long.
That was at the conference, yeah.
One thing I might say about the meeting is, you have to have the eyes open, because there were some disturbing presentations. And doing this every day, there was some people that had some disturbing presentations that thought they knew what they were talking about, that did not. Some of the, some of the people that did bid, that were putting together this on the fly, it was obvious. That is not what we want. We don't want somebody that's, we're the learning curve, we do not want people on the learning curve.
And I think if we do the RFP...
But there's a lot of difference over there.
And if we do the RFP correctly with the rights, we can weed those people out.
Right.
By the questions that you, what you're asking for in the RFP.
When we're talking about the, and Sons, we, when we checked, they, they listed on their paperwork that they had these particular parishes. We called the parishes, and they said, "Oh, no, we're not." Okay, we knew, we knew, and that's why, in that particular case...
There's a whole history behind that.
Well, and I understand, but I'm just backing up what you said, and, and that happened